Call the meeting to order.
I don't know what this is.
Um, I've had some conversations with Brenda over the last couple of days. I expect her here, but as of yet she hasn't shown, so everyone else is here. Would everyone stand face the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before the, uh, yeah, we don't have a scheduled presenter, does he?
Right.
Okay. Before we approve the agenda, please scratch pre-scheduled presenters for this evening. And under new business number four, please add 2018 humanities trip. And, uh, subject to those changes, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Jerry on the motion.
It's good.
On the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. We have scheduled presenter.
I don't know.
Okay.
You doing it?
Nice.
Sometimes being hard to hearing does have its merit. Okay, reports in communication, student liaisons are not here.
No.
Committee reports. We don't have a scheduled committee report this evening unless somebody has something for the cause about their individual committees.
Remember you can always go in the interactive and click on those and see them. Just keep that in mind.
Okay, um, having not heard anything, we'll move down to the administrative board reports and the high school principal report is attached.
But again, remember you can click on them and see them interactively through there.
Um, no elementary, uh, do you have anything for the calls this evening?
Something I can.
Thank you. Jake. Dave, you'll be down a few notches here. You have anything else to add to?
No, not tonight.
Alright, thank you. Okay, Sue, anything for you?
We've got a lot to talk about on the irrigation system and some facilities still, so that's where we're at.
Okay. Public input. Anyone have anything for the calls this evening? Anyone? Okay, we'll move on. This is one of those meetings, folks. We have a couple of things on the agenda, but, uh, not a lot. Nothing under old business. Under new business, consideration to approve an irrigation system. And maybe we'll have Dave lead us on that.
Well, I've been putting numbers together. I have interest in getting irrigation for the playground area and soccer field area, combination of both over at the elementary. We currently don't have anything over there whatsoever, so this will be an install that would be, uh, everything needed from water to power to piping, um, the works. Uh, we're having trouble even really striping the fields over there, not to mention, uh, the amount of use that it gets used for the playground activities and gym classes is daily. It's every single day. At this point, it's virtually like concrete, and I'm not exaggerating, it's as hard as concrete out there. So the irrigation would be the first step into loosening up that soil, getting some grass to grow and making it more of a playable surface for the kids. So I went ahead and, uh, got some numbers together, submitted those and, uh, looking for direction on which way we want to go with it.
Indeed, it was good enough. Yeah, we had two bids come in, um, he went ahead and got a third as well.
I did get a third bid. Um, the third bid, he had some troubles. He was about $25,000 under the other two bids. As soon as he found out kind of what he was doing, he wanted to revamp his bid. I haven't got that number back yet. It, I just wasn't comfortable with it to begin with, to be honest with you. Uh, but I do actually have a third set of numbers, but, uh, they're not complete.
When the, uh, when the original school was built down there, they ran into some limestone or bedrock of some kind which caused them to, boy, I think blast. Dick Mensy might have been a part of that process way back when, but, uh, it was extremely hard. Uh, have they taken that into consideration that there's?
Well, that's one of the things that they, the third bid did not take into consideration even though they were told. The one company that actually came out because they were concerned about it was Common Ground and made it actual core samples to verify that they would bid accordingly to the ground that they have over there. Um, I, I don't know exactly what's under there. I've heard the rumors, but I let them know that we could be running into some trouble trenching up there. Um, so they expect it.
So this is both where the soccer fields are and the football practice fields are back there?
Just the, just the low.
Elementary school.
Did they put down like a six inches of topsoil when they built that area, do you know?
That's what I heard. Uh, honestly, I wasn't here then, I don't know, but yeah, I mean, I heard it wasn't much. You know, it's pretty much, I think what they did is they just moved the soil within the campus from different places. So it's not all fresh, nice black soil.
So the, the areas on top, ball fields on top, they're not part of this process, or are they part of it?
Um, you know, that's where you have your nicer soil. You have about six, eight inches of the good soil so the grass can grow, that's what they did. Um, but you know, you have to go down a little deeper than that, so you're gonna possibly run into some problems and then you're gonna need some new black dirt to fill in trenches and things like that.
But your, this would be just, yeah.
Yep, this is the soccer fields down below, not the football field way up top.
So it's the area down below?
It's just the area below, correct.
I walked over there this morning just, uh, so I could see what was what. Now there's soccer fields are 110s and 55 for a football field, so wider for a soccer field. So we've got, we've got two soccer fields adjacent to one another.
Correct.
With a little spillage on either side, so there must be.
And in the middle of them.
Yep.
Yep.
Are we talking acres here?
Yeah.
Yep. Like how many?
We're talking a couple acres.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I was quite surprised by it. I remember when kids played, kids probably banks age, uh, played football out there in the old day and, uh, it was like, yeah, concrete then. We met as a facilities group, Carrie, what any input here?
Um, one of my concerns was the injuries that are happening down there. It's happened because of the ground being so hard. A little better J K B S, a little more input on the type of injuries or?
It's been more, you know, playgrounds and kinds of things. Um, we haven't had soccer that long to know. Um, you know, what it's coming down to is we just want the safest play that we can have and we want to protect John Birch Park and, and moving all of our athletics down there, it just doesn't work. We, we've tried to kept that, keep that field up and going as much as we can, but to keep the athletes safe when they're playing an intense game, you know, that would be the other option. And I've checked with the city, we just don't want to move any more games down there if we can help it, so.
You mean it's brought back from the church this way as well?
Right.
You know, we have a lot of activity just with the, the FIDE and the recess and all the kids out there. Now with soccer added to it, that traffic has increased and the fields are noticing it. The more traffic, the more compact is, you know, it's getting and, uh, it's, it's a difficult surface to play on.
It's not the smoothest surface in the world either. What, what will become of that if we irrigate it? We still have some dips in that, is, is that a separate issue entirely?
That's a separate issue entirely. Uh, you know, there's other things that are, you know, we're gonna need to maintain that surface, but you can't do any of it without water. This is step one. Really getting water to be able to get that surface to be the way we want it. Anything from aerating to slit seating to, um, you know, other things to break down the, the hard compact surface. So, you know, there's quite a bit to do to get it to where we want it, but you need water for all of it.
You certainly wouldn't want to be a goalie on what I think is the north end. My directions aren't bad because that is just brutal there.
Yeah.
That's, that's not conducive to any sports at all I can think of.
Yeah, there's no grass at all there. It's just dirt.
I guess I'm kind of lost. I have no idea where this irrigation system even is or was or there it covers. Is there a map that I can get ahold of or, as I saw, was consideration to improve the irrigation system? I didn't know if it was a replacement of our old one or anything, so I'm kind of in the dark here. I haven't seen the location, don't know what area it's covering or anything or.
There is not down there, no.
I know there's not.
Is there any at all at elementary?
Nothing.
In a pencil, yeah.
But exactly what area is it covering? Then I guess it'd be possible, because we're getting now some.
Some.
What would this be as far as an increase of coverage? And are we looking at the potential water costs with the city? Of what, I mean, we're gonna maintain, but we might as well know the scope of what it's gonna cost. Once you install, when you start running all your water, how much are we talking in water annually versus what we're doing now? We talking another?
I can't answer that.
Five thousand? What's our average water usage now?
Well, it's minimal right now because we really didn't even use it last year, but I, I don't have those numbers.
It really, it really does depend each year. I can give you a history of the last 10 years, kind of an average, I think.
I just cares what it's gonna cost. I mean, we're gonna gra, have more grass, cut more lawn, um, pay more water, and I don't know where it is.
Okay. So let's write that down as something we need to get our?
I have an existing map I can send out.
Yeah, we can get out to.
Yep, I have it.
That's very easy to do and very appropriate.
Do we have a general ballpark figure of what we're looking at, cause?
Yep, um, both the bids came in right around 55,000. I agree, you know, for the facility meeting, there was one that looked better than the others. The third one, um, obviously isn't even bidding it correctly, so I think we'll kind of maybe leave that one out. Um, I can go through some of the numbers here, just so we kind of have a good idea for next time. What I want you to do is look at the bottom three lines. Um, this is your entire facilities budget is what you're looking at. And what I really wanted to do was where can we find the funds for this? There's been some conversation of tennis courts and there's been some conversation of irrigation. Um, we have to be very careful about our funds and, and where things are at. This year with the big long-term facility project, we're able to roll a lot of our deferred maintenance right over into that project. Way better bang for the buck and we're always trying to do that for our taxpayers. But what it does is it actually frees up a lot of our facilities money. And so in the bottom, what I did is just did a separate column at the end. It's where we can find some, uh, the potential irrigation use. Uh, fuel for the buildings. This year, um, it's been a much milder winter. We all know that from our home. And then actually our new boilers are saving us way more than we even anticipated, which is great. Uh, so we're in the positive about $45,000 right there. Um, it's a one-year snapshot, but that's where we're at. Um, keep in mind that I don't want to spend all of this. We don't know where, there's gonna be some change orders that come through, there's gonna be other things coming. I'm being very cautious with this, but I want you to understand that the money is there, um, if you decide to move forward with this and, and just giving you that information. Next thing is our repairs and maintenance. Um, at this point, we're still about $25,000 ahead in that area. Again, um, CCC roof needs to be looked at. There's a few things there. Uh, Dave is gonna have other things that he needs to get ahold of, uh, for these funds, but again, $25,000 there. And then equipment purchased, um, I just don't know if I can say enough on what Dave Peterson has done to save this district money in purchasing. Uh, just the lawn care and the, the, again, um, we talk about it all the time, but the snow removal. Um, that's on top of the increase in the size of the tractor you guys bought. We still are looking at a positive balance right now. And if you look at, um, year-to-date where the balance is at, we still have about $24,000 in that account. So, I mean, it's a grand total of about $94,000. Uh, we're looking at about $50,000 for irrigation. I'm not crazy about spending all of this. We really have a lot of things that are kind of unknowns. Um, the tennis courts are still unknown. I'm working with the city very closely on, on how we're gonna look at that. Shepherd Center is looking at putting in some pickleball courts and they may want to help us with some of the, the upkeep on some of that. Um, currently Jake is renting out the, our tennis courts to Shaffer Academy and some of these other schools and they really like our courts. So, um, it kind of depends on who you talk to, I guess, if they're, they're good courts or not. But I do think at this time we do have the funding available for, um, the irrigation system and I know when we talked to the facility meeting, we wanted to know where that money would come from. Um, this is your entire district fund. Um, you'll see some of the accounts are a little over. Uh, you've done a really great job, Dave, with, with everything you've spent money on, you do a real nice job. So some of that'll be moved around a little bit, obviously, but you, um, you definitely have $50,000 if you want to go ahead on this project.
What is your priority on this as a, as the person, as the maintenance guy?
Well, if we're gonna utilize this space and we're gonna continue to move in the direction, you know, with using it for students on a daily basis for athletics, we're gonna have to do something, any way you slice it. Um, you're gonna spend water. Can you get those exact numbers? You might be able to get an average yet. It all depends on Mother Nature, but we can't get to the point of having a field that's a playable field until we have water on it. It will get worse and worse and worse. I mean, that's a fact, there's no way around it. Um, if we're going to use this space, I think we need it to be watered. I really do.
Yeah, it really is the only place on our entire campus that doesn't have irrigation. Um, if, if we choose not to go with this, we really need to start working with the city and, and looking at moving at least our competitions where kids are doing high impact and things like that. We really need to look at moving that to a different location. Uh, maybe practices might still be okay, but the high-impact games and activities and then may have to change some of the activities they do during PE class too.
How much use is it, is there gonna be this summer in the area?
Yeah, very little.
Construction, we're keeping everyone out of here. They won't even be able to get over there.
And keep in mind, that's another good reason to be able, to, to really get this going because you're gonna need that season. The trenching, the grass to come back, that kind of stuff, so.
And then my next question is, how long does it take them to install a system?
Uh, complete time, uh, you know, probably three, four days, you know, once you're piped in.
Have we irrigated that place back there in the past and anything like that?
I have not, no.
I know that we did do that in Jay Kirk McEnron, when we built the new addition on, they moved a lot of that extra. They needed somewhere to go with it and they leveled out, put more dirt on top of it, irrigated it, replanted it as well as we could, but some spots just never grew back as well. They talked about power seeding, if that's something I remember.
Well, and you can really tell now that we mow, there's some areas where you go and it's just sparse. In some areas it's real thick, so you're more, you know, more like.
It is hard to, I've noticed some of the times when you put the lines down, it just doesn't stick. It doesn't have anything to.
And it doesn't stick to dirt.
It's not.
Is it the right type of soil for growing? I mean, if we're talking clay, you know, are we gonna irrigate, seed and still have dirt when we're done? Do we know?
No, we had soil samples taken, so we know what the pH levels and what we need to do. So we've had that done already.
So you.
So we can grow on there, yes.
Okay, and we'll soak it and it won't just sit on down.
Yes, yep.
So it always has to be wet in order to keep it playable because if it's a hard, is more sandy back there? Is that?
It's more compact clay almost.
Yeah, it is clay.
Yeah, it's not sandy, no.
Okay.
How about our CE people, do we use that?
You know, youth football practice back there, that's, um, no, we don't use it too much. Football, like, yeah, play football, that's about it. And I'd be up on top anyway, so.
So a lot of times if we get the most remote use from CE, then we kind of charge it back over the same.
Using more of it was earlier?
Using it less all the time.
What, what is being played back there and like for soccer, how many games are back there a year?
You know, so they, uh, soccer teams, varsity teams can play 16 games, you know, bigger half are at home, boys and girls, then JV and junior high, so times three. Um, and then they play two or three times a week. That's soccer just down below and then seventh grade football plays back there, all those teams practice back there. Um, and then, um, yeah, like I said, practices and then youth, youth stuff too back there as well. Last, last summer, St. Paul's did use it a little bit for youth soccer, the new soccer league, but, um, you know, just a little bit of history. If you remember back when we, when we guys approved soccer, um, we kind of approved it without a place to play. Uh, one of the things was that was the spring that, um, John Birch Park was able to use their baseball team even at all because it had that tough winter. So we told them from day one, they're not gonna go play at John Birch Park and now those people are starting to come to us a little bit like, hey, can we play down there? Two years they played at St. Paul's and that was great that we could play up there, but there's some issues up there as well, so we moved it down there. And some of the section soccer coaches, they proposed that actually their games, especially their playoff games, we played in like a stadium setting with bleachers and stuff like that. We look at our system or our setup down there, the grass is what it is. Um, no bleachers at all, no power. We have a porta potty out there. Parking is tough and there's no concession, so, I mean, it's, it's not the best setup for hosting a soccer game right now, so this would be a good step forward for us.
Are we gonna end up doing things in phases like, like you said, I mean, we have no bathrooms in there, we've got one portable and that certainly doesn't fit, fit needs and probably pretty sparse storage there as well.
Yeah, I, I purchased a shed last year so I can at least keep the balls on there. I think part of this is we hopefully at least run electricity out there, so eventually if we wanted to put a scoreboard or something in there. I did buy a portable three-by-five scoreboard that runs on battery power that we'll have available this year, but I would think it'd have to be something to be done in phases.
We had planned on adding some power with the power going on for the system, so we could at least have some power.
Just a question with that then, should we be running power out there first before we worry about the condition of the field and seating and all that? If we're gonna do it in phases?
You, you're gonna be trenching to get the power out there anyways? I mean, for me, it makes sense to do them both at the same time instead of doing one and then paying to have it done again. You know, that's just my two cents.
It's a tough call, 'cause, I mean, not to say that this is a possibility, but all these schools own artificial turf and, you know, if we ever decided to do that all back here, you know, that solves some problems game-wise, but still, where do you practice? Uh, for these other teams, if there's soccer games out there two, three times a week, where does your football team practice? Still need someone to stay for them to practice too. So there's all kinds of questions with that. Tennis, like I said, the tennis courts need to be done. There's more kids playing soccer than playing tennis, but, you know, a soccer, soccer could play on dirt if they had to. You know, tennis, you can't really play on cracks and holes and stuff like that, like what could be happening out there soon?
Do we have a bid for the tennis courts too yet? Old, it's an old one, not anything new.
They're about the same. Um, the city has been looking at it too because they wanna, if we end up going half on it or, or however that works. We're up for the next public works meeting, so we'll know more then. And then Shepherd Center, Dave and I went down to, I thought a really nice meeting. Um, they're, they're working with the city, which is actually pushing this a little, I think, probably a little bit better, um, because they're taking the angle of adding the pickleball courts. Um, so we're trying to do that in cooperation with them, so that the city is kind of joining forces and it's sure looking, um, better. Wouldn't you agree, Dave?
Well, for sure, yeah. You know, I think their support's going a long way.
Yeah, I think it is.
Would it make sense to delay this till like the next meeting, give the third day, get more information?
Yeah, you can, absolutely. This is, I mean, the first time you're hearing it, that, that's all fun.
Right, I just get to action item.
And you know, we did that just so if you want to take action, we've got a lot of construction going on right now. I mean, in a beautiful world, it's all gonna be done at the same time. I, you know, it's one less thing when we've got trucks going back there. I sat through a huge construction meeting and I still don't understand most of it, but they all want access to different places. You know, having one less company back there ripping up, you know, things and putting in an irrigation system. We put it on there as an action item in case you wanted to move on it tonight. Um, we've talked about it a lot, but we've never presented on it, so, you know.
In timeframe is an issue with this project. I want you to keep that in mind.
Yeah, we will, the bids won't.
Thirty-day bids.
They're thirty-day bids, so we would, you would hope they would honor it after that. You've got, you know, but the one was done on May 16th, so we won't make the next meeting.
Yep.
May 23rd.
What's that?
We have on the May 23rd.
We do, but what I would say, he'd have to have that bid redone because they end on the 16th.
Which I can, I mean, that's not a problem. Um, but when it comes to, you know, getting grass in and irrigation and with these companies getting more busy and more busy as the summer goes on, it, it could change it a little bit.
Yeah, I would almost think we'd lose an opportunity if we don't act, but that's just me.
Well, two companies let me know that and that's why I'm stressing that. They're like, just so you know, this bid is 30 days. They're, they don't want to start turning down work. These guys are busy. So, you know, taking on a project this size, they want to have a chance to rebid it if they're busy and they will.
I know Josh hasn't said too much and that's probably appropriate, but he's dying to, but I'm not gonna call on you, Josh. But Brenda, do you have anything?
Well, I know those, it's, the fields are really, really hard back there. I've walked back there and I think it's something that we, you know, we need to get our fields so we can use them so that kids aren't getting hurt and rather than having to send them off or bus them off somewhere else to downtown or wherever to play. This seems like something that we need to do and if we know that and we have some good bids in hand that we might jeopardize enough, we don't just go ahead and make an action item now.
I think we made a commitment to soccer.
And I do, I like.
I think we made a commitment to, when we brought in soccer, to get them to feel a playing area, so I agree with you.
And I like what Brenda just said because we did look at the front. You know, that elevation, I didn't think it was that great. And then when we got those quotes in, we all about died because we can't level off the front. I mean, that, it looks very small, but the grade is way, way worse than you would think. Because a lot of people say move it up front. It's, it's the perfect place. Um, so we've looked into that option, so I'm glad you brought that up. We've also looked at the back football field, um, like all the football field. It's coned so much that, um, that too would take close to $100,000. We've looked at a lot of different options, so I'm glad you brought that up. It isn't like we're just picking this one. You know, we're trying to find a place that would be appropriate for all of our kids, whether they're K5, you know, PE class or they're running out there at, you know, their recess time or have it be a soccer program. Uh, we're just trying to find the best location on the property that we own and it so happens that that is very leveled. This is very inexpensive in the world of, um, like that front yard, I could hardly believe when we got those quotes in. Uh, we never even brought them to you because they're just outrageous.
Well, even the backfield too.
Yeah, it.
At least $100,000, at least.
Bare minimum. And I thought they were throwing lights in and there was no lights.
No, no.
So not lights.
I guess I'd say if we have time, I'd like to go look at it just even after the meeting, kind of if there's still lights, just, just see. I, I guess I'd like to table this. I'd make a motion to table it at this time until the next meeting. Go from there.
I'd second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Motion by Kurt. Second by Rob to table this. Any other discussion? I guess I will discuss. Um, I just think we need to move forward on this as long as we have an opportunity to move forward on it. Um, I haven't asked, last time we had a meeting, I asked the tech representative based on his meetings if he supported where we were going. And I think it's fair to at least ask the facility person if he, if this was a supported issue as well at this.
I would say it's well supported and we have the funds to do it.
We do have a motion and a second to table. Any other discussion?
I'll, I'll explain my views. Um, I think, I, I think as long as we have funds, that, that's great. We, you know, it's always nice to have funds and then whenever we have something available, we look for where we can make our savings and then when we have the savings, we spend it. And I'm not saying this isn't right or this is wrong by any means, but, um, I do think that maybe we're also investing in other things. We have buses to look at. We have other things that may take priority over this at this time. Um, it's not that I don't worry about the kids. Um, I don't know what type of injuries have been taking place out there. I, I haven't heard of any major injuries out there at this time. Um, but at this time, I'd also like to say we got some other stuff going on with the school project itself. I'd like to sit back with it for a year, kind of reassess and, and see where we're at. But I'm, I'm more than willing to go out and look at it and see what's, what's out there and kind of, maybe we can look at and say, hey, can this part be irrigated at this time versus, and tap into it later on and, and expand it from there, but I'd like to see it first.
Well, I think this is already done, the facilities committee and they're recommending.
Recommendation is to approve the irrigation.
And we have bids that are gonna be expired before the next meeting, so it doesn't seem to make sense.
We can always get bids, so bids, that doesn't scare me.
And there's a timeline, timeframe.
Well, and that's part of my, my perspective. I don't disagree with this, but I disagree with being put on the agenda with an irrigation system and absolutely having no more information than that and then expecting to prove a $50,000 bid tonight. If this was that critical.
I think it's fine to wait until the 23rd.
I would have liked.
Wait as long as you like.
Well, at the last, we need to have it as a discussion that this is what we're looking at, so we could have had a dialogue, more so than here it is. I'm, I'm a little slower in the, hey, this is what's new, let's do this. I, I guess I like to digest it more and understand what we're all getting, plus, you know, we're still looking at one more bid, which, you know, I don't know if it'll be any lower, if it'll be any better, it might be higher. I, I just, I, I think it's a good thing. I just don't know if I'm comfortable to make a vote at this point tonight. Next meeting, I'm sure we'll have more than enough information, more things will happen, but it's just, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying no right now. That's that's all.
When we did our, um, when we did the technology conversation, that was the first I heard of it at the last meeting. So it wasn't like it was a process that we went through. And really at the end of everything, I looked to you to say, you know, you've been at these meetings, is this a doable thing? Is this where we should go? So the fact that it's on here tonight, I don't think, um, makes a difference to us if, if it's the recommendation of facilities as well, so. if, if it's the recommendation of facilities as well, so I know what you're saying.
Well, and I, you know, if you weren't comfortable, I'd be more than happy to delay it. The other side of the thing costs the same money. It was a shift in our funds and realignment. There was no additional fifty thousand dollars to do this process, so that, that to me is the big difference. But, and every time I ever bring anything from a committee, if any board member goes, I'd like more information, I would agree and stop the whole thing and say, well, let's talk more, let's take it to the next meeting. That's all.
I'm kinda one of those people that says, here's an issue, if we can resolve it and it, uh, and you know, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't hurt the district. We do get kinda jumbled up in tabling things and I, I just like to move forward. We do have a, we do have a, a motion and a second to table. Um, I think we've discussed it for long enough. Josh, I think you need to recuse, recuse yourself and I think you're aware of that.
Yep.
All in favor of tabling this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
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 Okay, if we don't table it, do I have another motion?
I'll make a motion to approve irrigation system.
Is it subject to the low bid?
No, I don't want it subject to the low bid.
No, I don't either.
I want the, I want it subject to the best value.
And, and just to be clear, currently it's two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars difference. One is fifty-five thousand, one is...
One doesn't include any electrical that would be on our end, so it's, it would be in excess of five thousand more for the, we're going with the lower of the two.
So currently you're at low bid?
Yes.
Jerry made the motion.
Put a maximum in there.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was looking for, more than a low bid.
Fifty-five.
Not to exceed, are we okay with that term?
Pardon me?
Not to exceed?
Yeah, we're fine with that, absolutely.
Jerry, is that part of your motion or not?
Yeah, I can add that to my motion. Bid, bids not, not to exceed fifty-five dollars.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brenda. More discussion?
I guess for me, I, I'm, I'm just a little disappointed because I'd just like to be a little bit more informed about what it is and going out there and looking at it, so I, I guess bringing this up to vote now without me going back there and seeing where this is all gonna take place and what it's gonna, what it's gonna be like, I, I, I'm challenged to, um, I'm, I'm gonna just say that I'm, I'm, I'm not for, for that reason alone. I, I just need more information, need a little bit more time to look at this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the elementary irrigation system project at amount to not exceed fifty-five K. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That passes by a three-two vote, um, with Josh abstaining, and the two are Rob and Item two of new business, consideration to approve the sixteen-eighteen preschool teacher contract.
Jake, can you hear my name, sir?
They have a face scale similar to what the teachers at the elementary or K twelve system have. Um, they are asking for three percent and three percent, just like I believe that's what that K twelve system teaches them. No other changes.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Sorry about that.
I'll second.
Brenda made the motion. Uh, Josh made the second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
Jake, you hired three out of four new teachers last year. How are you feeling about things in our preschool? Are you looking at them staying?
Yep, I'm, I'm very hopeful they'll all stay. I agree with the kitchen that they will stay, so I'm very happy with the staff we got this year. Certainly not ideal to replace three out of four in one year, but they, they've done a heck of a job.
That's huge.
They're awesome.